If I could, I'll go ahead and call our meeting to order. I appreciate everyone being here this evening. The first item on our agenda is to call our meeting to order and establish a quorum of our board team. All of our board team members are here, so I appreciate everyone being here. Our next item is our invocation. We're honored this evening to have Dr. Mark Shaw, the Minister of Education and Children at the Heights Church, and he's going to lead us in our invocation.
Thank you for the invitation to come and pray. We must pray. Oh Heavenly Father, we know your name is holy. We wish for your kingdom to come and your will to be done in our lives. Lord, as we meet here, school board, that you give us wisdom, guidance, and the things we do. Lord, as the school year starts next year, we ask for you to give the teachers and administrators the wisdom, also the strength and endurance. Teach these kids wonderful things about your world that you've put us in. Thank you for that. And Heavenly Father, be with the students, that their minds are open to learning, that they're able to have fun in that learning, that they grow, be, and make, they need to be, make a difference. We also pray for protection in our schools, that you just protect everyone that is here, working to make this a better place to be, to live, San Angelo, all over the world. Praise you and thank you. Amen.
Thank you, Dr. Shaw. We appreciate that. Normally, we have students, but we don't, so I get to lead us in our pledges. If anyone, everyone will stand. Good evening and welcome. As the president of Board of Trustees of the San Angelo Independent School District, I'd like to welcome those of you who might be present at our regular board meeting this evening. I also welcome any of you who might be watching this tape of our meeting on our public access channel, Channel 4. We appreciate your interest in our students. All items that will be discussed at tonight's meeting have been previously posted as required by state law. Also, as you may be aware, our board meets a minimum of two times per month, and most, if not all, of our items on our agenda this evening have been previously discussed at an earlier pre-agenda board workshop. As members of this San Angelo Independent School District's Board of Trustees, we're here to set goals, listen to reports from our superintendent, approve budgets, contracts, and personnel appointments, and to make policy for the school district. Please keep in mind that our meeting is a meeting of the board of trustees held in public and not a meeting of the public. However, with that in mind, we have an item on each one of our meeting agendas that allows anyone present who wishes to speak to our board team an opportunity to do so. I'll make certain that we give everyone an opportunity to speak on any item not listed on our agenda. Additionally, prior to taking any votes, I'll ask audience members if they would like to make any comments. Anyone wishing to make comments on any agenda item should please do their best to limit their comments to three to five minutes. In compliance with state law, these proceedings are recorded and will become a part of SEISD's permanent legal record. In order that the tape might adequately reflect the proceedings, I ask that you please refrain from talking while others might be speaking. And I also ask, as I remind my fellow board team members, to please turn off or silence your cell phones at this particular time. Again, it's my pleasure to welcome you to tonight's meeting, and thank you for taking the time to join us this evening. We appreciate your interest in the activities of our students and the business of our school district. Our next item is item four, which are recognitions, and Ms. Crutchfield's going to help us with those.
Thank you, and good evening, Mr. Lehman, Dr. Detloff, members of the board. This evening, we are pleased to acknowledge and recognize several of our San Angelo ISD leaders for honors received from state professional organizations for leaders in education. First, we recognize Ms. Kathy Humble for being awarded the Region 15 Elementary Assistant Principal of the Year by the Texas Elementary Principals and Supervisors Association, or TEPSA. TEPSA's hallmark is educational leaders learning with and from each other. Ms. Humble is the Assistant Principal at Bradford Elementary. Congratulations, Kathy. Kimberly Spurgers. Ms. Spurgers is principal at San Jacinto Elementary School. She was recognized by the Texas Elementary Principals and Supervisors Association for outstanding service to TEPSA. School leaders honored by TEPSA must be a full-time Texas Public School Administrator or Supervisor in grades pre-K through eight, and a TEPSA member for at least five years. Congratulations, Kimberly. Scott Walters for being named Region 15's High School Assistant Principal of the Year by the Texas Association of Secondary School Principals. This award recognizes exemplary performance among campus-level administrators in Texas. Mr. Walters is an Assistant Principal at Lakeview High School. We recognize Ms. Ricky Black as the Region 15 Middle School Principal of the Year. This Texas Association of Secondary School Principals Award recognizes exemplary performance among campus-level administrators in Texas. Ms. Black formerly served as Lee Middle School Principal. Currently, she serves as the principal at Central Freshman Campus. Congratulations, Ricky. Jeff Bright as a Texas Music Educators Association Distinguished Administrator. This honor is for outstanding commitment to preserving quality music education experiences for all students. Congratulations, Dr. Bright.
Could you play us a little song?
Thank you.
Thank you so much, and congratulations to all those we had the honor of recognizing this evening, and good luck on a great school year. We appreciate y'all being here. Our next item on our agenda is item five. Anyone wishing to make comments on our board team, to our board team on items not on our agenda this evening now would be a great time to come forward. If you'll tell us who you are and try to limit your comments to five minutes, that'd be great.
Yes, sir. My name's Sean Odom. I'm the owner of Angelo Inflatables, which is an inflatable business here in town. It was brought to my attention at the end of the last year. I'm going to pick on Crockett Elementary. You guys had hired Jacked Inflatables, which is a non-legal company, non-insured company, to go to the school system. I was just bringing it to y'all's attention. That puts you guys at a legal binding spot for the injuries of all the kids. There are several of us here in town who's fighting to get the city to help us with this problem. There's three or four of us that are insured, we're bonded, we're with the city. By a million-dollar policy minimum is what the state requires. But we're, I'm here today to let you guys know that that puts that blame back on us if the kids get hurt. Because if it's my equipment, y'all would take the blame for it if you hired, like, Jacked again, or whatever. But if you have somebody like us, that puts my insurance policy up against the front and saves, hopefully, our tax dollars on that. And I just wanted to bring it to you guys' attention that that had happened, and when the school had asked me to bring my inflatables up there to the school because they couldn't bring enough, I told them no, and the reasoning behind it. And they were not upset, but they could not understand the reasoning why. And so I wanted to bring it to your guys' attention of what had happened and why I was trying to make a meeting as quick as I could and let you guys know what was going on.
Great. Thank you very much. I really appreciate you doing that, because you're not specifically on our agenda, we can't make any comments other than thank you for being here and assure you that we'll work hard to address that issue moving forward.
Not a problem. Like I said, I just wanted to touch base with you guys. I'm not trying to throw nobody under the bus or nothing, but at the same time, try to save the school some money, all of us taxpayers' money, and all that good stuff.
Yes, sir.
Thank y'all.
Thank you for being here. We appreciate it very much.
I appreciate it. Thank y'all.
Okay. Anyone else wishing to make comments? If not, we'll ask for a motion to approve our minutes. Do we have a motion to do that?
[inaudible]
We have a motion from Mr. Denon and a second from Mr. Gallegos to approve the minutes of our July 15, 2019, special finance and pre-agenda board meeting and our July 22 regular board meeting. Are there questions or comments concerning our minutes? Any public comment? If not, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed, indicate by saying no. Our motion passes. Our next item are our report section of our agenda. I think Dr. Ritter has a report this evening.
Lehman, Dr. Detloff, and members of the board, with our academic update for this month. We wanted to highlight our accountability ratings that were just released last week. Some of the highlights here are, I guess, we're proud of our B overall district rating. We had 14 distinctions for academic achievement on different campuses. We do have five improvement campuses. Our strongest improvement in the area of academic growth in elementary, this is students that grew at least one year academically. That is interesting because of the work that we've been doing in our schools and with our elementaries, and that we are seeing that through our data, that our students are making academic progress of at least a year-ish growth that is starting to show in our accountability system. We also had strong college career military readiness indicators at Central and Lakeview High Schools, which both are B campuses, and that was a large part of their success as well. Overall, our improvement was, we went from a 77 to an 85. Then to highlight the things that we are continuing to do in our district, because we do have such a focus on the continuous improvement, and in all of the domains, wanting to continue to show progress and growth with our students and continuing the initiatives that we have started, we're going to stay the course with those. Certainly, our, this is also, these are things that all of our campuses, our principals went through, all of this with their staff. We did this with new teachers coming on board this year during our Culture Day. So all of these things are things that everyone in our district understands, that these are our district values overall, our mission, our learner and educator profile, our teaching and learning plan, which also includes our curriculum management plan, our curriculum framework, the PLCs, our professional learning communities, and outlines for that, which is embedded professional learning on our campuses. Our designed roles and responsibilities that are very specific for every level, so for principals, campus leaders, instructional coaches, and teachers, also district administrators delineated in that. Our focus on design qualities and student engagement, our literacy and math initiative, and our capturing kids' hearts culture with the focus of social-emotional learning, all through the lens of our community-based accountability. And then to focus more specifically on our academic priorities, we are continuing with our Scholastic coaching model. We truly believe that this is the most impactful practice that we have going in our schools at this time. We're moving that forward all the way through eighth grade for all of our students in pre-K through eighth grade at all of our campuses, elementary and middle school. And high schools, with their literacy focus, we do have coaching going on. It's not through Scholastic, but we have coaching happening there in those campuses as well, focusing on English I and English II this next year at our high schools. Our Fountas and Penel Elementary literacy adoption, and the Houghton-Mifflin Middle School literacy adoption, this is the first year for our new literacy adoption. So along with the work we're doing with Scholastic, we had, this was the year for the literacy adoption for English Language Arts and Reading. So in researching all of the different materials that were available, working with teachers and instructional coaches, content facilitators, we determined that the Fountas and Penel and Elementary, and the Houghton-Mifflin and the Middle School were by far the best resources that will continue to allow us to have our focus on comprehensive literacy and the balanced literacy programs in our schools. So lots of reading, lots of books. They're getting those deliveries as we speak, and they're in the classrooms, and the teachers are getting them set up. We've done quite a bit of training this summer, even this week, with our teachers, and it's very aligned. We also, through our curriculum, made sure we wrote those resources into our curriculum so that teachers can click on the links and they have access to all of it right at their The Math Solutions Coaching Model and Embedded Professional Learning, again, is something else that we're continuing with our teachers who teach math in elementary, middle school, and high school. And we will be increasing that focus this year in providing more opportunities for coaching with those teachers at all levels across the district. We saw lots of success with that as well. STEM labs at every elementary campus, we're proud of that, and those materials are in and being set up on campuses, and they're doing training as we speak at campuses every day right now on those STEM labs, and that will be really helping us with the enrichment focus. So all of our elementary students will have opportunities to engage in the STEM labs on the campuses. And then we have our Lincoln STEM Leadership Academy that starts this year, and it's full. We have the number of students, how many kids, Farrah, exactly, in our, 28, starting, and they'll be in it sixth grade, seventh grade, eighth grade. They got their devices. They're going to be starting that, you know, with the first day of school. And so we have a little report on that as well here in a minute additionally about that. And then, it's always important, we believe, for us to focus on our systems and processes for continuous improvement. If you're not paying close attention to what you're doing and how you're doing it, you just have to make sure that we're focusing on those processes that we're building and putting systems in place to continue the improvement that we're experiencing, the success. This year, we are implementing principal and instructional coach professional learning community networks. And this is interesting because all of the district-level administrators at the superintendent, assistant superintendent level, executive director level, we all are taking and leading a network of principals, of about four to five principals in our groups. So every three weeks, we will meet on a campus with those principals and go through the PLC, the Professional Learning Community Protocol, talk about the things that are happening, looking at data, talking about best practice, implementation, talking about the implementation of the curriculum. And then we'll take 30 minutes to walk through some classrooms on the campus so that it's giving those principals an opportunity to see best practice happening in the classrooms. And then they'll debrief. So this is going to be an exciting opportunity, and our principals are excited about this. This is something new that we're going to be doing this year to help monitor the implementation of these great practices that we're teaching them, trying to support it at the campus level, and also reviewing data about that as well. We are implementing evidence review meetings quarterly here at the district office where this same team, we will have the principals come one at a time and talk to us about what are your points of pride, what are the things you're concerned about right now on your campus, and looking forward with hope, what are we doing about it? How can we support you and help you? So that it helps all of us to have a close eye on the formative data as we go and ask those questions about implementation, again, of the curriculum and best practice in the classroom. Also, we're implementing classroom observation process, increasing, and we're just holding everybody, all of us accountable for this, every teacher, every week, with feedback provided, that there will be short, even just 15-minute observations, but the principal, the instructional coach, the assistant principals getting into classrooms and just documenting that they're getting into classrooms, which, through our Leveraging Leadership book study, is a book study that we're all doing as administrators at our level, down to our principals. And in that book, we're learning that a very big component of this is time management and how we're scheduling, so we're all holding each other accountable again by scheduling, sharing our calendars, and calendaring these opportunities together. To be very intentional about the practice that we need to be doing to monitor great instruction in our classrooms and to support our teachers. And providing district campus support through the monitoring of the curriculum implementation and the best practice, and just having conversations about that, and making sure that we're seeing the things that we're expecting to see in the classrooms. And so, as you know, as we're moving forward with our community-based accountability system, and you'll be hearing a lot more about this every board meeting, probably, and as we start the work, and we had John Tanner come to our Leadership Academy, Campus Leadership, and spoke with us about the next steps in getting ready to go with our pillars of student engagement and high-quality staff and professional learning. So with that focus, we're moving forward, starting to build our CBAS systems on each campus and in the district. And so this is the elevator speech, our belief statement about community-based accountability that we developed with our success team, that SAISD believes the time is now to fully value the hopes and dreams of each child, to remove whatever barriers exist in obtaining them, and to never again allow a child to be treated as a test score. We will be accountable for each child's future by honoring their strengths and supporting their needs while improving the system that empowers them. So we feel that that's a pretty powerful statement. And we did introduce this to our staff this week as well. And finally, we'll end with our mission, that this becomes really the framework for all of the work that we are doing in our district. And this was the mission, you know, developed through our strategic planning process. The San Angelo ISD's mission, to engage all students in a relevant and inspiring education that produces future-ready graduates. And so we do feel that with these efforts, that we are moving forward to carry out our mission. So we thank you so much for your support, and we look forward to sharing more information and great things with you as well. Are there any questions?
Would you mind providing all that information to our board team?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Riera. I appreciate that. Everything sounds great, and we look forward to meeting the needs and making sure we do have future-ready students.
Thank you.
Item C is, in our report sections, to have a childcare services public?
We're going to show you a little video. I'm sorry, I meant to say that before she walked up here. As part of the academic report, we wanted to share with you a video of the summer of the Lincoln STEM Academy, so that you could see just a quick, just a lens into that from the summer that we did. Is it working?
Well, real quick, Janet, that was a real powerful statement that, where we will not, what did it say?
Treat.
Treat a child as a test score.
Yes, as a test score, right. Never again allow a child to be treated as a test score. Yes, it is powerful. And it's important. We know that the test scores we use certainly to measure effectiveness or implementation, but overall, we know that we have to focus on the things that we need to focus on for our students so they can become what we want them to be for their future. Okay. It looks like we're going to have to do it next time. It's not working. It's, it lost it out of the drive. Okay, we'll bring it next time so that you can see it. Thank you.
We will move forward to our item C in our report section, which is 2019, 2020 childcare services. And this is just a public hearing concerning where our students are going to be after school. So Shelley?
Yes, sir.
I'll turn it over to you.
This is a required public hearing for the San Angelo YMCA After School Program, which began in 1989, 30 years ago. The YMCA After School Program gives working parents peace of mind by providing supervised care for their children by a professional staff team. The After School Program practices the four core values of caring, honesty, respect, and responsibility in all of their activities, which include indoor-outdoor activities, homework time, arts and crafts, games, and much more. This program is licensed through the Texas Department of Family and Protective Services. The YMCA program provides onsite care at all elementary locations. Registration open July 10 and can be completed at the YMCA site. Financial assistance is available to all that qualify. Additional information can be found on the YMCA website, www.ymcaSanAngelo.org. We appreciate the continued partnership with the YMCA and their services they provide our students, parents, and community. Are there any questions or comments?
So we're having it at all of them, at all the schools?
Yes, sir.
Good, good. Because we used to not have one.
Last year was the first year that we had it at all of them. This is the second year.
Somebody asked Shelley a real tough question, if you don't mind. Okay.
Thank you.
We'll let y'all. Thank you. Thanks, Shelley. We appreciate that. And thanks, as you mentioned, to the YMCA, a great partner, someone who's been involved with taking care of our kids after school for many, many years. Our next item is Item D, Federal and State Policies and Procedures Manual and Dr. Free. It shows you as a presenter here. Is there anything we need to do?
No, sir. That was just informative. I did not change anything in it from year to year except for names of people that changed places.
Okay. Why don't you say that from the mic, and then I'll let you go.
It's a manual that we have year to year, and all I did this year was change names of positions that people hold in different roles this year.
Okay. Thank you. Our Items Es are provided in our Friday Facts, six weeks average daily attendance report, as well as included in our Board Packet this evening. I think our attendance for the six weeks was down about a half a percentage point, so still really good, around 95% attendance in the six weeks of the school year. So that concludes our Report section. Item 8 is our Consent Items. Do we have a motion to approve Consent Items A through G? We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion from Mr. Hernandez and a second from Mr. Parker. Our Consent Items are, Item A is to consider bid number 19-009 for office and classroom supplies and furniture. Item B is to consider bid number 19-010 for printer cartridges. Item C is to consider bid number 19-011 for HVAC filters and installation services. Item D is to consider superintendent's recommendations for personnel for school year 2019-2020. I didn't have an addendum on my desk. I'm assuming just one person this evening. Item E is to consider TTest certified appraisers. Item F is to consider extracurricular status of the 4-H Organization and Adjunct Facility Agreement with the Texas A&amp;M AgriLife Extension Service in Tom Green County. And Item G is to consider TASB Board Policy Update 113. Do we have any questions concerning any of our consent items? Are there anyone that would like to pull any of those items for further discussion? Do we have any public comment? If not, all in favor of our motion to approve Consent Items A through G, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, indicate by saying no. Our motion passes. Our next item is Consider Bills and Accounts and Financial Statements for the month of July 2019. Move for approval?
Second.
We have a motion from Mr. Dindell and a second from Mr. Parker to consider our bills and accounts and financial statements for July 2019. Let's not consider them, let's approve them. Any other questions or comments from our board team?
Mr. Lehman, just a note to those present and those watching on Channel 4, that all of these reports and accounts were viewed at length in our meeting, our pre-agenda meeting last week. And in addition to that, all of these reports can be found online or at our website, ssisd.org.
Thanks, Mr. Dindell. Any other questions or comments? Any public comment concerning our bills, accounts, and financial statements for July 2019? If not all in favor of our motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, indicate by saying no. Our motion passes. Our next item is to consider 2019-2020 Student Code of Conduct. Mr. Underwood.
President Lehman, Dr. Detloff, Board Trustees, before you tonight, you have a proposal for the Student Code of Conduct for the 2019-2020 school year. You'll remember last week, we did a presentation, and I'll give you a brief overview about that. We started with a proposed model from Walsh, Gallegos, Stravino, Russo, and Kyle, which is our current legal counsel for SAISD. We felt pretty good about this particular model being legally researched and written, and specifically containing new language based on the '86 legislature, to make sure that we were in line with new laws that were coming down the pipeline, and also making sure that we were in line with language that is adopted in Chapter 37, which is the legal reference and code for discipline behavior management for the schools. We did a group with secondary principals and elementary principals where we went through current issues in the Code of Conduct and things that we needed to make sure that we were in line with and things to consider, which include ISS and SAC and short-term cover, long-term cover. We went through a series of about 31 worksheets, questions that we answered. Based on our conversations from last week, we did make some minor adjustments and revisions to the Code of Conduct that you have before you. Specifically, on page 12 of the Code of Conduct, we added a reference to the Student Dress Code when it was referencing the dress code, so we made that to the student handbook so that parents could reference back to that document so that they could see that dress code. We also removed names of titles in reference to only positions in special education and for the Director of Safe Environments and Student Services. We removed reference about jurisdiction, about behavior during off-campus lunch, and then one other item in prohibited conduct for enticing or preventing another student from attending school. So those were the major changes that we made in reference to questions and things and concerns from last week. And with that, I'll be happy to answer any additional questions that you might have.
Other questions for Mr. Underwood? Go ahead, Dr. Detloff.
Mr. Underwood, I just want to thank you. I know relatively, you're new to our school district, coming from the Assistant Superintendent position, and I just want to thank you for your keen eye for details. Also, I want to thank you for really responding to feedback from our administrative team and our Board of Trustees as you develop our Code of Conduct. So thank you for making certain that this is in conjunction with our legal counsel, and we look forward to having a process and a structure that will keep all kids safe and certainly in their learning environments for as long as possible. So thank you, and we appreciate your work on this.
Thank you. Any other comments? Do we have a motion to approve our Student Code, our 2019-2020 Student Code of Conduct? Move to approve?
Second.
We have a motion from Mr. Hernandez and a second from Dr. Kingman to approve our 2019-2020 Student Code of Conduct. Any further board questions or comments? Any public comment? If not, all in favor of our motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, indicate by saying no. Our motion passes. We have announcements to cover, so we have a special meeting to adopt our budget on August 26 at 5:45 PM. We have our September Finance and Pre-Agenda Board Workshop on September 9 of 2020, our regular board meeting on September 16. And then Becky also put on here our TASSA and TASB convention dates, which are September 20 through the 22. And our convention this year's in Dallas. So anybody have any further business that we need to conduct as a board, or items that we would like to put on our agenda for future consideration? If not, and here are no objection, we'll stand adjourned.